Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, September 24th, 2013. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number two, public input. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak this evening? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number three, meeting call to order. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Dr. Domingo?
Excused.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Dr. O'Leary?
Absent.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Present.
Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes for regular school committee minutes on August 20th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Donovan, seconded by Mrs. McLaughlin. Is there any errors or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor? Five in favor. Next, we have approval of minutes of the special school committee meeting on August 27th, 2013. Have motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Mrs. Donovan, seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion or correction or errors? Mrs. Quinney?
I believe that it's incorrectly called a special committee meeting because the meeting was announced and it also wasn't called for us to address a specific topic, which is what's outlined in our policy manual to be called a special committee meeting. I know that it was posted at Town Hall as a special meeting, but I think, I believe that that was done in error.
To answer your question, if you look in the minutes of August 20th, I had said that it would be a working meeting with a time and place to be announced, and it was a working meeting because we did not vote the regular school committee meetings at that time, even though that date was on for regular school committee meeting. And I believe I sent an email out to everyone stating the time and the date, and it had to be made a special school committee meeting in order to do any voting, and we did have to vote the minutes, the times for all the meetings for this year. So that's why it's a special school committee meeting. So it is not an error.
My understanding is that a, to be a special school committee meeting, it has to be called for a particular reason.
We called the meeting to, to vote for those scheduled meetings that we did not vote. Remember, we postponed them because we didn't vote them, so that meeting was to vote those.
We also undertook several other items of business and not all members of the school committee were present.
It is still, under my experience, a special school committee meeting. Again, we can postpone again if you want me to look into it again. I have looked into it and I believe it is a special school committee meeting. You can vote no on the, on the minutes if you'd like, or we can postpone it once again to the next meeting for a third clarification.
Does that make the meetings that took place in the summer special meetings then?
They were all on the agenda as special school committee meetings.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing none, can we have a show of hands, please? One, two, three. Obstains? No abstentions? Rejections? Two rejections. I believe it still passes three to two, so those minutes will pass. Next on the agenda is the regular school committee meetings for September 10th, 2013. It should be meeting, not meetings. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Quinney, seconded by Mrs. McLaughlin. Is there any errors, corrections, or discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor? Five in favor. Moving on to the next agenda, which is Chairwoman's announcements. This evening, I do not have any announcements, so we'll move on to the reports of our representative of student advisory, Rosa. She's not here this evening. So moving right along, we have presentations. I've asked the school committee members before we came up if they minded if we moved the presentations in front of our school committee reports, and they all agreed. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Pat Carrera from Massachusetts Association of School Committees. She will be doing a presentation on our superintendent's search. Pat?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Is this my outside voice or my inside voice? Wait for him to sit down. I should start.
Go ahead, you can, you can start.
Oh. That's okay. I understand. For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Pat Carrera from MAS C. I've been with MAS C about, well, it'll be 18 years in February. Before that, I was a school committee member in Springfield for 12 years. So I've been there, done that kind of thing. Got the T-shirt and can't wear it anymore because it's too, too big, I'll say. I'm pleased to, to, to do a presentation tonight. I'm excited. This is an exciting time, but before I even get started, I, I don't have a policy, uh, yeah. I don't have a presentation, PowerPoint presentation, so you're just going to have to listen to what I have to say if that's okay with you. But I think it's important for you to know that if you, if you have someone internally that you're confident in and you feel could do the job and take over when Buzz leaves, that you should consider that, that possibility, that person, instead of doing a superintendent's search. It's, will save you a lot of time and money and whoever you select, a lot of energy. You can look high and low, but if there's somebody here, my advice to you would be to offer the position to that person, interview them in public, and see how the committee feels about it, and then make a decision. And then if that's not to your liking, or that person doesn't pass your, your questions, then I would certainly go ahead and do a search. I think you have to understand that searches, unfortunately, the pool of candidates that we have out there for searches right now is not as large as it used to be. There's still a lot of very good candidates out there. It's important for you to understand that oftentimes, they're not sitting superintendents, they're not assistant superintendents. Most assistant superintendent positions are gone because of Proposition Two and a Half. They're just gone, and because of budget cuts. So I think that you should probably consider that you will get business managers, you will get special ed directors, you will get high school principals, you might even get a middle school principal. And as long as they're qualified and as long as they have met all of the qualifications of the state, then I think that you should consider them. But just understand that. We do have some sitting superintendents who are looking around to see who's out there and what's out there and what's being offered. The important thing for you to remember is the, the financial piece of it. As much as you're looking for a new superintendent, somebody out there is looking to come here, but you have to agree on the financial piece of it. I would recommend that you have a search committee. You had a search committee last time, and it worked very well. And it was made up of various members of the, of the community, besides teachers and administrators. And I don't think we had a student. I don't remember. I don't think so. Sometimes I do, I just don't remember. They worked long and hard, and they were very committed, and obviously, they're very interested in what happened in Southbridge. So that's important. Do you have any questions you want to ask of me?
Anyone?
As we go along, or do you have some that you've already prepared?
As we go along, I guess.
Okay, okay, fine. As far as announcing the vacancy, you will have to pay for some announcement, and my advice to you would be to use Education Week. That's the largest publication for educators in, in this, in this nation. And that's probably going to cost you about $1,800 to $2,000. You can advertise in the Boston Globe, that will cost you about $6,000. And it's just one small piece in the back of, of the Globe on Sunday, which tends to get lost. Education Week is, is the premier advertisement place for you to go. We will also advertise it on our website. That's free of charge. We will also advertise it with the Superintendent's Association. That is also free of charge. As, because we're members of the National School Board Association, we can advertise with them on the national affiliate, affiliate of school, of school superintendent searchers, and that's free of charge. That means it goes nationwide. Any, any of the states that are members of National, of NSBA will post it on their website, so that's free. So there's a lot of advertising, but I would certainly, and also local, if you wanted to advertise local. But I think you should probably look a little bit, spread that net a little bit wider as opposed to just local. Anybody who's local, who's in education, is going to read Education Week anyway, so. And you want to save as much money as you can when you're doing a search. We, we recruit in the terms of we don't go to sitting superintendents in Massachusetts. We don't feel that that's ethical for us to do. We only serve school committees, and so a sitting superintendent, if I were to go to hypothetically Boston and say, "Would you please come and, and apply?" That would not go over well with the Boston School Committee, I'm sure. So we would rather keep the committee as a member than try to recruit. But we do have a cadre of resumes from people who are interested, and they're educators, and they're all certainly well-qualified in our office. The important thing to remember is all of your candidates will have baggage. Some baggage, some have more than others. And the good news is that we are, we know pretty much who's who in, in the education field and who's applying for what. We give them an application and, and a brochure that talks about you and what you're all about, and we design it with the school committee. And what else do we do? We ask that they have a, the application. We ask for three letters of reference. We ask for a copy of their, their certification, licensure, I guess, more proper today. And a copy of their university placement file or other transcripts, credit or degrees. And we also ask for three current letters of reference, and we ask for three references on the application, different from the three current letters that we ask for. I encourage you to have a search committee, as I said before. I think that's important. It involves the community, and it shows that you are interested in involving the community, and you understand that this is probably, in my, my estimation, the most important position in any city, town. This is the person that controls the education of all the children in your community, so. Pretty important, with all due respect to the Board of Selectment and the town manager or the mayor or whatever. Screening process is, is up to you. I, we do a lot of screening at MAS C because we know candidates and we know the baggage, and we understand how to screen these people out. But I don't object if somebody from the school committee or the screening committee would like to sit down and go over the candidates and screen them with us in Boston. That's fine. Or if need be, bring them out here if I have to. But you have to remember that there's a certain amount of confidentiality that goes along with that screening. And I'm very, I'm a stickler on that. I really believe that it's very important that if the superintendent of Worcester, please, I hope I'm not misquoted, if the superintendent of Worcester applies to be a candidate in your district and has not informed her school committee that she's doing, so that would not bode well for her or her remaining years as superintendent, tenure as superintendent. So I think it's important that we, that you try to understand the confidentiality piece. And as I like to say, according to the AG's office, we only get one bite of this apple in executive session. We can't do something in executive session, come out, and then go back into executive session again. That's just not, not allowed under the law. So that's very important. And I will keep you all legal, kicking and screaming. I will do that. So. Any questions on that?
Anyone? Not yet.
Okay. The final selection, the selection of finalists will be up to the, the search committee. And none of the names who are semifinalists will be made public. The only names that will, will be made public are the finalists that the search committee sends to the school committee. And from that point on, everything is done in open session. Interviews are done in open session, site visits are done in open session, meet and greets are done in open session, and the final interview of the candidates is done in open session. And the vote that you take is done in open session. There's no, let's go to, you know, executive session and discuss what we have just, the person that we have just interviewed. That's just not allowed. You have to do it all in open session. It's the public's right to know. That can get a little testy at times, and I understand that, but that's the law, and we all have to abide by the law. Any fault, once you have made a decision, we will certainly help you as you negotiate through the contract with this new person. We have sample contracts that we're happy to share with you. And what else can I tell you? We will come out, we will do a, a workshop, which is part of the, the process that we do of roles and responsibilities, so. And that's, as I said, part of the process. Once the superintendent comes on board and once everybody is comfortable, we'll come out and do that. Any questions?
Anyone?
You want the big question?
Anything. Just raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you. Mrs. McLaughlin?
Hi, Ms. Carrera. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. You mentioned that you did some, the screening. Is that, does that entail like background checks? And what does the screening actually entail?
Screening is, is, we, we will read all of the resumes to make sure that they meet the expectation that you, as a school committee, has decided or voted that this is what you want to see. These are the qualifications you're looking for in a candidate. And we will go through all of the resumes, read them, and make sure that they, A, are qualified, that they are certified or licensed or eligible for licensure. I don't want to say certified, and I shouldn't say that, because we used to say certified or certifiable, and everybody used to laugh at that. So we say licensed or licensed. Make sure that they're licensed. So we go, and we, that's what we do for screening. If you decide after you've, that you want, say, between nine and 12 semifinalists, that's what we will narrow it down to, nine and 12, and bring you those nine and 12 to be given to the search committee to interview. Background checks, we're pretty savvy about background checks. We know a lot of these candidates. We have access to a lot of their records, their files. We have access to where they work. If they're coming from out of state, certainly our state associations have no problem calling us and asking us about candidates, and we don't have a problem calling them, asking them about candidates. So we can find out things that you probably couldn't on your own, that wouldn't be ethical for you to do on your own. The only queries that you would do would be the, the final candidate. You would do a query on that. And you could do background checks on the finalists. If you had three finalists, you could call the people that they have indicated are their references. So that's basically what we do. Unless, of course, you decide that, you know, or the committee, or the search committee decides that they want to see all of them. Then we'll spend the day going through all of them, and I would hopefully tier them for you, or the search committee. Just remember, if we do that and we go into executive session to do that, once, if it's the full school committee, once you make a decision, then those interviews are held in public. That answer your question?
That did. I have another question, but I don't know if, I don't defer to anybody else with a question. And what do you consider a successful search, a successful search process? What, how would you define?
Well, obviously, I would say to you, MAS C's process has always been successful. Okay? How it works out, I mean, we can bring you quality candidates, and I like to say that I always feel comfortable, it's like when I get in my car and I get ready to go somewhere and I put my seatbelt on and I click it and I hear it click. If I hear that or see that happening during the search process, then I'm comfortable with that. Those candidates, those finalists. Somebody who would stay for the three years, I can tell you that the average is three years. It, and it isn't because of a district, it's just what it is. You know, gone is the day of my superintendent, who was in the district for 43 years, and started as a teacher and worked his way up and was, you know, the superintendent for, I don't know, 10 or 15 years. If you're lucky enough to find somebody like that, hang on to them. That's very important. But a successful search is when everybody is happy with the final choice. The candidate says yes, you come to an agreement on the contract, and it's signed. And then that person belongs to this district for the length of that first contract. I would caution you, though, when you're doing contract negotiations, to be very mindful of rollovers. I know Superintendent's Association will tell you that they're very important and you should have them, but the School Committee Association is telling you, not so much.
Anyone else? Mrs. Quinney? Madam Chair, through you to Ms. Carrera. How many searches will MAS C be leading this school year?
How many searches will we be doing? Oh, I, I don't know. I did five last year. Just me. And there's four of us in the office that do searches.
And would you?
I, I don't know. You never know. It's, now they're starting, you know, people, once school starts and superintendents come in and they decide that they're going to retire at the end of the year, then we start getting phone calls. We are in the process of making search presentations to, I would probably say to you, at least a half a dozen districts. But I know that there'll be more down the road. But you also have to understand that the state is divided into four sections, because there's four of us that do searches. You're just lucky enough to be in my district.
How often would you say a candidate from outside of the state would come in, in your experience? Does that happen frequently?
Outside of the city or outside of the state?
Outside of the state.
We have had several of late. Most of them have been in this, in the state before, have left, gone on to be superintendents in other states, have vested themselves there and are coming back to Massachusetts to finish out their, their, their 10 years or 15 years or whatever. So I, I would say, you know, you're not going to get a lot, but you are going to get a lot from the northeastern section of the country.
In reading your packet, you had said that during the interview process, the search person from MAS C would sit in on those interviews. What is the benefit to that?
What is the best what?
What is the benefit to having a person from the search committee come and sit in? Other presentations we have don't do that.
Because you're our, our school committee, you belong to our association, because we're concerned about the interviews that you do, and because we work very hard with you and the search committee to, to design questions. We like to see candidates and how they answer questions, and to see if they in fact do answer the questions that you're asking and not say something else and get off, you know, where they shouldn't be. I enjoy doing that, and I, I have been told that it's a comfort for school committees and search committees to know that that consultant is there, that I'm sitting there, that I'm listening. I don't ask a question. My job is to bring the candidate in, introduce the candidate to the chair of the search committee or the chair of the school committee, and then sit down.
And given we have two other presenters tonight, what would you say sets MAS C apart from other search organizations?
Because we serve only school committees. We don't do anything, we don't do any other employment searches. It's strictly superintendents. We don't even do assistant superintendents. It's just superintendents, and it's for school committees. Other than anything else that we do policy, but everything that we do is centered around the school committee and how they, how they function. So. And because we're MAS C, and because we're going to be here when other search consultants are not. But I like them all. They're nice people. We know each other. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Madam Chair, through you to Ms. Carrera. I just wanted to talk finance a little bit. In your packet, you talked about, there were some fixed costs relative to the fee and consultant expenses, and perhaps even postage and printing. There was a, a number that you would not succeed. Is it right to say that the only thing that was the non-given would be any type of advertising above and beyond what you mentioned when you started your presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're looking at, you know, like $9,500 includes all of our staff and our labor, et cetera, et cetera. Travel for us and telephone and things like that is $1,500. But then, you know, any expenses covered under those two items, if it exceeds that $2,500, we don't charge it back to the school committee. The only other, the only other cost to you is the advertisement. And as I said before, EdWeek is usually $1,800 to $2,000.
And is it up to the discretion of the committee to pay for, say, travel expenses or visits to home districts if we find a potential, or say, a semifinalist if we, say, they live two hours away and we need to have him or her come here? We would have to pay for those travel expenses?
My advice to you is to not pay for semifinalists' expenses. I always like to say it's, if they're that interested in you, then they want to come here on their own dime. However, when you get to the finalist stage, I think that that's something the school committee needs to decide. Are you going to pay for finalists? And nine times out of 10, finalists end up being relatively close by. So all that's really involved would probably be mileage. Might be an overnight at a B and B or something like that. You might want to consider picking up that tab. If you're submitted a bill. I, I've not seen any bills been submitted to school committees, which is kind of nice. I mean, everybody understands there's a financial crunch going on.
Right. Okay, thank you. I guess a follow-up question would be, Madam Chair, through you to Ms. Sheridan. Do we have a fixed budget amount, or is this something that we'll look at later of what we have for a pool of money to determine? You know, we have two other presenters, but going into this, an idea of how much we're able to spend on a search session like this? Or is that something?
It was not part of the budget when they set up the budget.
Okay.
But we can look into areas that we might be able to do some transferring of.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I think the only other expense that you might have is, it'll come to me, I'm sorry. I lost it. It's gone. I'll think of it. When I do, I'll let you know.
Okay. My other question to you was relative to a time limit. If you have a pool of candidates, and you've mentioned the pools are getting smaller than they were in the past, and if it just so happens that we come across a really bad pool, how long do we wait until we get the good pool? Like, I don't want to settle, obviously. And if we, I'm not sure as far as setting timeframes, it's that, something that either the school committee will do or the search committee will do. What if you, you know, you're really striving to meet that timeframe, but there really isn't anybody out there that you want to settle for? Does that affect the search process in any way with a bad pool?
Oh, I don't like to think that there would be a bad pool. I think there's always good from the pool of candidates that we have. But I would say that I have submitted a tentative timeline for you to, to, to consider. And advertising in EdWeek, keeping it in EdWeek for, say, five to six weeks, so that candidates have an idea of, of what you're looking for and who you're looking for, is, is good. Once you get over that five to six week timeframe, the search process goes pretty quickly. If we feel at the end of that, that when we're going through and, and, and reading all of these resumes, that there's really, really no one there, and I have never come across that, then what I would simply do is come back to the school committee and say, "We need to, we need to repost."
Okay.
Okay, and, and then it wouldn't be of any charge to you to repost the position. Same if you got to the end of the search and nobody was happy with any of the candidates, then we would go back out again. I've only done that on two searches in eighteen years. So, I, I don't, I don't see that as an issue.
Okay.
But I understand your concern.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
Before you leave, Pat, I do have a question. You did speak about what kind of people would be on the search committee, but I would like to know if, who's in char, who's in charge? How do we pick the school committee? How many members are the ideal amount of members on the search committee? And whether it's considered a special committee or a subcommittee?
I would say nine to thirteen people is, is a doable committee. You can have fifteen, and that's, that's fine. I've worked with twenty-one, which is not a good thing. I think that you should decide amongst yourself what representation you would like on that committee. If you want teachers, if you want an administrator, if you want somebody from the public, the general public, the business community, if you're looking for that. You know, I think that putting in those categories, like three teachers, three parents, I don't like to see a search, search committee top-heavy with administrators or educational people. I like the community to feel as though they're part of it and that the educational community doesn't have it all sewn up. So, I would say that. Somebody from the seniors, somebody, there's always somebody active. If I'm not mistaken, last time we had, I don't know if he's, maybe I'm speaking out of tune, Senior was on the committee, and that worked well. It was an outstanding committee, and it was a mixture. There was, I want to tell you, there was at least one, possibly two, school committee members on it. I don't advise any more than that, because I don't like the community to think that the school committee is running the show. I also like to, like the school, the search committee to elect their own chair. I think it gives them a sense of empowerment. I think if you all appoint the search committee, then you've all had a, a piece of that. But let them elect their own chair, somebody that they feel comfortable with and that they feel could lead them through this process. They are appointed by you, which means they are a, they, you know, you can, we can mince words about a special committee or a subcommittee. I don't know that I would call it a subcommittee. I don't even know that I would call it a special committee. It's just an ad hoc committee, I think, set up by the school committee, appointed by the school committee, and everyone on that committee must abide by all of the roles, the rules and regulations that you all have to, because they're an arm of you. They're part of you. So, that means the open meeting law, ethics, everything that you have to abide by in, in MGL, they do. And we make that very clear when we meet with them.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Recently, what school districts in our area have you placed superintendents?
Springfield, Holyoke, I'm looking at my letter, Gilmonagu, East Long Meadow, West Springfield. I am, I mean, there's a whole list of searches there, but yeah, I, those are the, the most recent ones that I can recall.
Great. Thank you.
So, they go from large cities, Springfield, Holyoke, to with, who have their own set of issues, to Gilmonagu, which is a regional, and Bay Path. I've done some work with Bay Path. They did their search, I did technical assistance with them. They were wonderful to work with. I'm excited about searches. It's, it's just like a whole new beginning for a district. Takes a lot of time, but worth it.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Am I also have a member of the administrative team as part of that search?
Yes. Yes, you can. You can have two administrators, you can have one administrator. If you want to send, if you're talking central office administrators, that can happen. If you're talking a principal, that can happen. Whatever the school committee is comfortable with. But I think you should set up categories and identify those categories before you set up a search committee, so that everybody is agreed. As long as you're including everyone, then that's, that's fine. But yeah, administrators are good. Unless you want Buzz to run the whole show, then I'm certain he could do that, because he's that good. In fact, why don't you keep Buzz for another year? Let's see, Buzz, how can we, how can we make this?
I didn't prompt him.
I know you did.
I conducted the search.
I know you did. And you worked with MASC, and we gave you technical assistance, and all is well. Life is good. So, stay for another year, have them look inside, see who's available, and then, you know, then you don't have to spend any money or do a search. It's getting to be winter, you know? All the new shows are coming on television.
Is there anyone else with any questions for Pat?
Well, seeing none. Thank you, Mrs. Carrera, for coming.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll be meeting in the next couple of weeks, and I'll keep you informed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
And you know, if you want to, don't hesitate to get in touch with me. My, you have all my phones and email addresses. Not that you don't. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go get the next one. Okay, I'll go get them. I'll go get them. All right. Moving on for our next presentation, we have Mr. Art Betancourt from NASDAQ. Thank you, Mr. Betancourt. Welcome.
Thank you very much. While our computer is, is warming up here, just to introduce myself. As mentioned, my name is Art Betancourt. I'm the executive director of NASDAQ, the New England School Development Council. NASDAQ is a not-for, not-for-profit organization. We're located in Marlboro, Massachusetts. And as soon as I can find the, the right program here, we will be ready to go. As mentioned, the New England School Development Council is a, a not-for-profit organization. And I'm here this evening with Dr. Bill Erickson. You'll notice that Bill's name is in larger print than mine. And the reason for that is because Bill is the, is the search consultant that we would recommend do this search for you if we are engaged for, for the search. We were originally established at the Harvard Graduate School of Education in nineteen forty-six. As mentioned, we're a not-for-profit corporation. We also have a for-profit wing of our company, but the, the portion of the wing that works with public, or the portion of the firm that works with public schools is a not-for, not-for-profit. And our mission is very simple. It's developing schools and school districts as high-performing organizations. We accomplish our mission in four ways. We have four core areas where we, where we work with school districts. One is in planning and management. We're very well-known throughout New England for doing strategic planning, facility studies, enrollment projections, demographic studies, as well as specially-designed work for districts to help districts plan for their future and to solve problems. We also do a lot of professional development work. Our professional development work is unique in that we really deal with all levels of the school system. We deal with leadership figures and school committees. We deal with building administration, teachers, and also support staff. We also have a very large presence in research and development. And in particular, we have three national publications, and the area of interest to us is in team governance. In other words, helping superintendents and leadership figures and school committees work together to plan, to create goals, and then to achieve those goals, and obviously to evaluate what they've done and, and continue on in the process. The reason I'm here this evening is to talk to you about leadership development. That's our fourth core area. Leadership development involves not only working with and developing new leaders, but also doing executive searches, which is why we're here to speak with you. As mentioned, we are a New England-based firm. We're not, we're not dedicated to a single state. We're dedicated to all of the New England states. And since we've been doing executive searches, we've done well over five hundred successful executive searches throughout New England. In your packets, you have a sheet that looks something like this. This is a meeting guide agenda. I'd suggest to you that at your leisure, you might want to take a look at it. What it does is summarizes all of the elements of a search. This particular one, for presentation services, purposes, is one that we did for Newburyport, Mass, but they're all very, very similar. Newburyport was a, a search that we did this past year, a very successful search that turned out very well, we think. The sheet that I just pointed out to you can really be sort of condensed into, into what we're about to say here. There are six elements, basic elements of a NASDAQ comprehensive search. There is the design phase, the development of a candidate profile, recruiting and outreach, preliminary screening, final screening, and the follow-up. The very first thing we would do with you if engaged to do your search is we would help you design the search. Every search is a little different, and therefore, we would take the time to work with you in terms of the various elements that you would want to see in your search. And we would come up with something similar to this, which would, on the left-hand side, indicate the, the tasks to be performed, those that would be, the middle would be those that are responsible, and then the milestone dates to meet those, those particular tasks. The design phase is something that we do because we, we think this is your search. We can come in and do a search our way, but what we think is important is to have someone come in and talk with you about doing it your way, because ultimately, this is your search, and we're assisting you in the search. You have in your packet a sheet that looks like this. A typical search takes about a hundred and twenty days. I won't go into this in detail. Again, at your leisure, you might want to look at it. And in fact, regardless of who you engage for the search, the graphic might be helpful to you. But essentially, what it does is it breaks down the milestones of the search in terms of a timeline. As I said, a typical search takes about a hundred and twenty days. After we've helped you organize and develop and design your search, we would then develop what is called a candidate, a candidate profile. We, in your proposal that I put together for you, we have included focus groups in that proposal, which is an opportunity for us to go into the community, to designated constituencies that you would point out to us, get their feedback in terms of the qualities and characteristics that, that the community is looking for in their new superintendent. We would then bring that information back to you and have what is called a facilitated conversation with the school committee. Let me make a, just a, a demarcation here. Many times, the community needs assessment is regarded as the candidate profile. And in fact, a lot of, a lot of search firms will do the candidate, will do the, the needs assessment, give you that information and say, here's what you're looking for. But that's really only part of it. A very important part of, of developing a candidate profile is taking that community input, bringing it to the school committee, and having the school committee make sense out of it. Having the school committee synthesize it with our help. And that's what this is all about. Again, that puts the school committee in the driver's seat when it comes to, what are we looking for in our next superintendent? So, we go into the community, to designated groups that you would, you would send us to. We can also do facilitated interviews with stakeholders in the community. And then we would have a facilitated conversation with you, the school committee, where we would ask you, okay, what does all of this mean? How do you, how does this, how does this, how does this help you in terms of putting together your view of the next superintendent? After that conversation, we would, we would come back to you with what we've heard you say, synthesizing all of that into a candidate profile for you to use. The candidate profile drives the search process. It drives the kind of people that we recruit. It drives the way your screening committee, for example, looks at candidates. And ultimately, it's a, it's a, it's a, a way of the school committee measuring candidates that it is, is looking at for the leadership position. The third element of a NASDAQ search is outreach. Included in our search would be a hard copy announcement letter that is mailed to the NASDAQ NSDC network. Now, NASDAQ is a New England-based firm. We are also a member of a larger network of organizations called the National School Development Council. That's NSDC. So, not only do we do a regional outreach, we also do a national outreach, and virtually all of our searches are national searches. There's no additional cost for that. There's really no additional effort required, because that's all built into the search. We would mail that hard copy announcement to probably seven hundred contacts throughout the nation. In addition to that, we have an electronic network where we would do staggered announcements electronically, again, nationwide. Then also, the other two elements that we have that are very attractive, we have our own website, which is highly regarded and is visited constantly by folks that are looking to move on in their career. Very popular website, getting numerous hits every day. And then we also have the NSDC National Network as well that we can work through. And in addition to that, included in our work for you would be putting the announcement on professional websites and bulletin boards that we have access to for superintendent associations, school board associations, and those sorts of, colleges and universities. In addition to the electronic outreach and the hard copy outreach that I just mentioned to you, we also are including electronic advertising in this proposal at no additional cost to you. So, essentially, what we've done for you is put a proposal together that is all-inclusive. If, if you did everything in the proposal, you would not need any extras. You can have extras, and we can talk about that. But the fact of the matter is included in this is an electronic advertisement, and these are fee-based advertisements, they cost money. And obviously, that's included in what we've done for you. In Top School Jobs, which is the, is the electronic version of Education Week, also the AAASA Bulletin, the American Association of School Administrators, and School Spring, which is another electronic board that we use. All of those are included. And if you wish, we can do additional print advertising at cost. We simply do that advertising and pass it through to you. A very large part and important part of the work we do is in recruiting, and our recruiting is unique. There is no other firm that has what is called tiered recruiting the way we do it. We have, first of all, the recruiting network of the consultant, in this case, Bill Erickson, who will be speaking with you shortly. He, through his own connections, has his own network of, of recruitment that he uses. In addition to that, we have ten search consultants that work for the firm. All of these search consultants collaborate in recruiting for all of our positions. In addition to that, we have our database, our network database in-house, which is extensive and very effective in terms of attracting talent. And as mentioned before, we have the National School Development Database as well, so that you get the personal recruitment from your, your search consultant, you get the team recruitment from all of the search associates that work for our firm, you get our proprietary database at the regional level, and you have the proprietary, proprietary database at the national level. We will help you as you move on in the search with preparing all of the applications for your review. We conduct a training workshop with the sc- We conduct a training workshop with the screening committee and with the school committee in terms of interview techniques, developing interview prompts, scheduling interviews. We do all of that work for you. We debrief with the screening committee and the school committee during the interview process and the review process to help you in terms of any questions you may have about the candidates. And we can also assist you in the selection process. We don't, obviously, we don't select the candidate for you, but we can facilitate the discussion around that selection process if you'd like us to do that. We also help, there's a very important piece of work that is done during a search, and that is getting to the point where, when you're looking at your final one, two, or three candidates, understanding what it will take to, in fact, appoint those candidates, to land those candidates. What we do when you get down to the finalist stages, we develop what is called an agreement in principle with each of those finalists. Essentially, and it's a non-binding, it's not a legally binding agreement, but it is a way for us to talk with each of the finalists and say, okay, what are the requirements? What do you need in terms of salary? What are you looking for in terms of fringe benefits, relocation costs, all of those things? If we detect through those discussions that there is something that's going to get in the way of that appointment, then we will tell you that, which hopefully, it doesn't always work out this way, because in the negotiations process, you don't always have a meeting of the minds. But the idea is to bring people to you that you can, in fact, land if, in fact, you're looking at these people seriously as your final candidates. We do credential verification and reference checks. We can assist you in preparing your final interviews. We schedule interviews and assist the district in a visitation itinerary. If you want to visit the candidates' districts, we can arrange that for you. We would assume that you might want candidates to visit your district. We can help you with those arrangements as well. And as mentioned before, we can assist in processing the final decision in terms of facilitating that conversation. As a follow-up, we can assist you with the initial contract arrangements. We don't negotiate the contracts, but we can tell you some of the salient issues that you might want to look at in a new contract. We can also talk with your council regarding that, if that's requested. And prior or shortly after the new superintendent comes on board, if you wish, we can also do an entry and transition consultation. This is our consultation with the new superintendent to help him or her develop an entry plan for coming into the district. Also, you are a NSDEC affiliate. We've done work for you before. In fact, I've been in this room and spoken to former school committees before, and we've done some planning work for you. And you are a NSDEC affiliate, and therefore, you'll notice in the proposal that we've given you that there's a 20% discount on our fee. And also, something that sometimes strikes people rather strangely, but we also have a warranty, and it's written right into our document there. The warranty, in essence, says that we will warranty two things. We will warranty that we will continue your search until you've found your superintendent. In other words, if you go through the process once, and the candidates, none of the candidates seem to be the ones that are right for the position, we will continue that process until you find your candidate. The only thing we will ask for, and we will do that for no additional fee, the only thing we would ask for is the expense portion of the contract, which we have separated out for you in the proposal. The second part of the warranty is that should your superintendent leave the position within two years of appointment for any reason other than retirement or a promotion, which applies to assistant superintendents mostly, we will come back and we will do a similar search for no fee. Again, just the expense portion of the search. Couple of things to leave you with. NSDEC is a regional comprehensive firm with national recognition. We've been in the business for 66 years, actually, going on 67 years. We have a regional and national tiered recruiting that we use. Our nonprofit status translates into our ability to give you really the highest quality services at a very reasonable fixed price. And also, something that we think is very important is that we advocate school committee involvement in designing the search and in candidate profile development and other elements of the search to ensure that in the end, the candidate that you do choose is a good fit for your district, and as I said, that this is your search, that it is done your way. With that, I want to thank you. We'll answer questions, and at this point, questions would probably go to Bill if you have any who would be happy to help you.
All right. Is there any questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot of the questions that I had in reading your proposal, you've answered throughout the presentation, so thank you. But one thing that I just wanted to clarify relative to the focus groups, the community focus groups, in the proposal, it says that you will meet with up to four. And if I read it correctly, if we want anything above that, it would be an additional $365 per group? Is that, did I read that correctly?
What we usually do is we leave that up to the search consultant. It really depends on scheduling. If we can schedule a bunch of focus groups together, and we can make good use of the consultant's time, then that's something that you can work out with the consultant.
Okay.
Bill?
And hello, I'm Bill Erickson, obviously. And I would be very pleased to work with you in Southbridge if you were to choose NSDEC for this. I can answer some other questions like that. What Art said with regard to focus groups, we'd talk about how many focus groups do you think it would take to adequately gauge the sentiment of the community at large? You know, it's typically faculty members, it's typically residents or municipal officials, perhaps. I won't spell out what they could be. And four is a reasonable number, but I'm only about 50 miles away, so I can schedule multiple focus groups on any particular day if we work it out right. We want to have as much participation-
I wanted it more travel-based rather than-
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So I live in Southampton, it's about 50 miles from here, and so I would essentially be at your disposal during this whole process to meet with you. As Art said earlier, we kind of shaped the search around what the school committee has in mind with what we know about what might help you have a successful search. And we actually, to put it another way, we actually build the application, we build the design of what you've said you were looking for essentially in a superintendent. We will help, as Art said, promote, publicize, advertise, and recruit people whom we think would really make sense to be a logical prospect for your position here. There is a networking involved. I've been retired since 2005, and actually, I got involved in searching because I was honored to be able to search for my own replacement when I retired with the school committee at the time. I had five school committees at once, so I had a large group, and we worked that out. It worked for five districts simultaneously. That's what you do in regional districts. But since then, I've worked on five, I think, maybe six, other searches for NSDEC, and I've really enjoyed that process. I would repeat that it's really tailored to how the school committee feels would be best. You know Southbridge better than anyone else. You know the community, you know the nature of your schools as school committee people. And we will try and match that up with qualities and the knowledge and the skills and the attributes of prospects or applicants for that. It's also, a superintendent search is a mutual learning experience. Not only are you learning about the applicants, but the applicants are learning about you. You don't expect everyone would know about Southbridge before they apply. Some of that application process is really mutual learning. I'm sort of an agent for the community in working with the applicants. I talk to them, I know them, I will get to know them, and I will answer for them a lot of the questions, sometimes simple, about the community, and help them gauge really how important would it be for them to be a candidate here in the long run, and why this would be possibly a very good job for them, whether they're beginning as a superintendent or experienced superintendents wanting to move on. Let's see, I will let you ask some other questions, because I'm afraid I would talk too much otherwise.
Okay, gorgeous. Thank you. The other question that I would like to ask is relative to the executive coaching that's at the end of your proposal. First of all, I didn't know if you could just expand a little bit about it of what that would include, what types of things do you coach on, what is the timeframe of coaching? And also, you say that those services are fee-based. If you could give me a general idea of what type of fee, you know, that would incur?
Sure, sure. Well, first of all, let me say, and Bill may elaborate upon this too, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents does, I think, a really nice job of the initial coaching for new superintendents. And so I would suggest to you that that typically is a very effective way, cost-effective way as well, to introduce coaching. We're involved more in the longer-term coaching. And essentially, what we do is we design the coaching experience around the school committee's and the leader's needs. So we would sit down with you, and we would go through the various areas where you would like the emphasis to be. And we would also include in that coaching, provided this seemed to make sense to you, a planning effort to ensure that the new leader and the school committee are proceeding to achieve the same goals with a mutual understanding of what those look like when they're done and how the evaluation process will take place. The other thing that we do, which is very unique, there aren't many other firms that do it, and personally, I love this kind of work, and there are a lot of people in our firm that do it extremely well, that's leadership team coaching, where you take an entire leadership team, the superintendent, the principals, the directors, and you actually bring a coach in to coach the whole team. And we use, I don't like to use sports analogies, but it's similar to thinking about a quarterback on a football team. Quarterback seldom is his own coach. The quarterback is there running things on the field, but it's always good to have someone on the outside sort of looking in and seeing the whole organization, how it functions. The reason the cost is not stated is because it depends on the scope, what folks would like. Bill?
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Mrs. Quinney, and then Mrs. McLaughlin.
Madam Chair, through you to Dr. Erickson. How is it that a search consultant is recommended to a district? Is it just based geographically, or are there criteria for that?
Did you ask how we would recommend?
Yes.
I'm not sure about what you mean by-
They said that you would be recommended to be the search consultant for Southbridge. I didn't know if that was geographically based, or if that was based on your experience.
That's, that's between Art and me.
Yeah.
It may be geography. I live in western Massachusetts, and I often get the call for positions that are vacant in this part of the state, although I've been to, you know, Bellingham and other parts east, but, and there aren't as many consultants in this part as there are in other parts. But I'm afraid it's no more personal than that.
Yeah. In the packet, it stated repeatedly that NSDEC has worked with school districts that have similar needs to Southbridge. How would you describe Southbridge?
I, you know, that's a loaded question, because I'm not, I am familiar with Southbridge. I mean, I grew up in central Mass. and Worcester and Millbury, and know about Southbridge and know about its history, and I'm old enough, I guess, maybe not quite as old as that fire engine, but I know something about the community and its successes and its challenges over the years. And like any other superintendent, I pay attention to what's happening in neighboring communities. Art mentioned network. I sort of have an informal network. I'm always reading the news about what's going on in school systems, and I usually am seeking policy issues, things that get superintendents in trouble. They didn't know any better, or they stepped into a situation that neither the committee nor the superintendent realized was coming. And I share articles about that. It's just a hobby, and I've been doing it since I had a lot of school committee members, but it's something I keep up with. So I could give you my impressions of Southbridge based on what I'm reading and what I hear about it from your previous administrations. And I know Dr. Nembiko very well from other times, so I know what a complete catastrophe it's been. No, it's been wonderful, I'm sure. I just am very appreciative of the kind of leadership we've had been blessed with, and I think that makes a big difference in terms of knowing the district. But our role isn't so much to advocate the town per se as to match the interests of the candidate with the interests of the community. So we'll step back to that.
Another question, kind of along that same lines. Within the packet, it talks a lot about being networked into the suburban school superintendents. I don't know if you would describe Southbridge as a suburban district versus an urban district?
I don't, I don't, I don't think of it that way. It's suburb of Worcester, I guess.
Just to clarify, that's one of the networks that we use when we recruit. How you classify Southbridge, I mean, personally, I would look at it as small urban. But there's certainly a suburban flavor to it, too, I think. I think it's an interesting mixture, like a lot of similar towns out this way.
Thank you. And the last question I have, you, a lot of things that kind of set NSDEC apart from the other organizations, which was nice to hear. How often have you found that a superintendent will relocate to a state? So it's a national search. You said you have a really good national network. How frequently are you seeing people come from across the country to, or out of state, out of New England, to come to a small urban district?
I don't know what word works, if even often has a statistical definition, but it certainly is, it certainly happens. We've worked on searches where people came from out of state. In some cases, people retire early in their 50s, and they are still looking to relocate to Massachusetts, for example, because it's seen as a desirable state for a lot of reasons that people would like to, in their later years, come and work. So for that reason, that's not at all uncommon. But I don't know that there's a number, it's just, we've had a lot of applicants over the years who have come on that basis.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, Mrs. McLaughlin. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Dr. Erickson or Dr. Betancourt. Similar to what was asked earlier in a previous session, how many searches do you have going at one particular time? How many searches would you be undertaking this year?
From my point of view, that varies, but I'm probably only going to be doing one search at a time personally. But the agency, depending on how many searches are needed, would have multiples. Plus, they're in other states, other New England states.
Yeah, keep in, when I answer the question, we'd want to keep in mind that we have 10 search consultants working for us, and we work in all of the New England states. So for example, I was up in Bennington, Vermont last week. Now, that happens frequently. So in any given year, we're probably doing somewhere between 12 and 20 searches throughout New England. We have a policy in the firm that no search consultant does more than two searches concurrently. Now, there may be a situation where a search is winding down, and there might be some overlap, but two concurrent searches is the standard. And that's really about all you can expect them to handle and pay attention to the things that they should be paying attention to.
Madam Chair, may I ask another question? Any recent success stories you'd like to share?
Well, I, before the meeting, I was looking at the searches that I was involved with, and I think in all, the six, actually, it was six, in all cases, the superintendent stayed, which we call that success. They were renewed, if their contract had come up and they were renewed successfully. And I don't know if that's anything to do with me, other than the fact that the process seemed to work for the community and for the individuals involved. Maybe that's just lucky, maybe that might not have been the case. I was an interim superintendent in Northampton two years ago because the superintendent who had been hired there got a whole different idea about what he wanted to do in life, and it wasn't a reflection on the community at all. In fact, Northampton was really, really baffled. They really, I think, were enjoying his success in two years. But he went to Europe, and he became principal of an international school in Europe, which for him was something that he wanted to do in his career. Now, I suppose you could say the search was unsuccessful in some respects. We couldn't see that coming. But NSDEC is there, they're doing the search again. I didn't work on it, but NSDEC is there again. So largely, I say we have a very good success rate.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just have one question, the same as I asked the previous presenter. What is your ideal search committee? How many people? Who runs it? And what is your idea of how that would best run?
Well, it's not an ideal, but you know, the answer is you can't have too many and come to a conclusion. You can't have too few, because you don't feel as if you're representing the community in its entirety. It's not at all uncommon that you would have people reflecting the employees, the professional staff, the support staff, the community, a student, not uncommonly, often a high school student, maybe, but it does- student, maybe, but it doesn't have to be. Certainly, teachers from different grade levels. The complexity of the district makes that kind of different, but yours is not a very large district, so I think that representation is entirely possible. And often, there are strong segments of the community. In some communities, it might be retirees, or it might be people who retired here. It might be the secondary workforce. It could be municipal officials. I guess I mentioned that. You, again, you don't want to have too many because it would be very difficult to bring them all together in concert because their role, if you have a screening committee, their role is to obviously narrow the field and provide you with a slate of finalists that they're comfortable with. So, that's an evasive answer, but that's not uncommon that we would have those people there.
So, what would be your happy number?
Oh, a number?
Hmm.
I don't know. 10, 8, 10, 12, maybe an odd number. No, I don't.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else with any questions this evening? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening and doing a lovely presentation, and I will keep in touch with you and let you know what's going on in our decisions as a school committee. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for inviting us, and regardless of who you choose to do your search, we wish you well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm just going to take like a five-minute recess just so that we can gather and start our meeting again, so if anyone needs to take a break or anything, so just take a quick five minutes.
Our officers' rate of pay.
It's the same base.
The same base, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo excused?
Excuse, yep.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Six yeses. Sec, uh, C moved that the Southbridge School Committee appoint Southbridge Police Sergeant Jose Dinghy as attendance supervisor for the Southbridge Public Schools pursuant to MGL Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Nineteen. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Congdon, do you have a second? By Mrs. McLaughlin, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call on that, please.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo excused. Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. D moved that the Southbridge School Committee appoint Southbridge Police Detective Robert Salisbury as attendance supervisor for the Southbridge Public Schools pursuant to MGL Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Nineteen. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Congdon, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Quinney? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo excused. Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Abstain.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Moving on backwards, now, we will have the school committee reports. A, Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Kara Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to announce that we'll be holding our first Curriculum Subcommittee meeting on Tuesday, October first, at seven PM in Room M one hundred at twenty-five Col Ave. Uh, the purpose of that meeting will be almost a meet and greet for our new Director of Teaching and Learning, Miss Patricia Gardner. Uh, we'd like to sit and meet with Miss Gardner and perhaps talk about some upcoming programs that could enhance student achievement, as well as maybe prepare some goals or an overview for the school, uh, the upcoming school year relative to our Subcommittee. So again, next Tuesday, October first, seven PM in Room M one hundred of twenty-five Col Ave. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Quinney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Policy Subcommittee met last night. Present were Kara Donovan, Jill Congdon, and myself. We have started reviewing the policy manual in its entirety and started on Section A of that policy manual and are looking to, uh, make additions, corrections, and changes in that. And our next meeting is scheduled for October seventh. That is... No, I'm sorry. The sixteenth. That was the Curriculum Subcommittee I wrote down. Uh, the sixteenth at five forty-five. And that is all.
Thank you. Negotiation Subcommittee, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Negotiation Subcommittee will next meet on Thursday, September twenty-sixth, uh, to continue negotiation session with the Southbridge Education Association.
Thank you. Next, we have Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee, Mrs. Congdon?
Yes, um, I just wanted to thank everyone who passed out surveys and who filled out surveys at all of the open houses. We received about three hundred responses and a lot of good information. The results are all still being tabulated, and they will be released on the district website, as well as to all of the parents. Um, I wanted to thank the PTA and the Middle School, High School stu- school store for their donations. Um, when people filled out the raffle, they got entered to win a prize, so that was nice that they donated that. Um, the PTA donated books, and the Middle School, High School donated, um, a gift certificate to the school store. Um, also, I wanted to thank Mrs. Donovan, Sue Latour, Kevin Congdon, Sandra Aponte, Michelle Duval, Sue Congdon, and Lisa Farren for their help at all of the open houses distributing the surveys and getting the parents and, um, other family members to fill out the surveys. Our next meeting will be held October seventh at six thirty in Room M one hundred on twenty-five Col Ave. At that meeting, we're going to, um, go over the survey results. We're going to talk about, um, a parent compact and discuss upcoming meetings and speakers that we're going to be having at these upcoming meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, um, this is not a Subcommittee, but it's a new, um, position that we voted in last meeting, and that's our SpedPAC liaison. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first, I wanted to explain a little bit about what the SpedPAC is. And, um, under Massachusetts General Law seventy-one B, every school district needs to establish a special education parent advisory council. In this district, it's referred to as the SpedPAC. The duties of which include but are not limited to advising the school committee on the safety, um, policies and, um, education of students with disabilities within their programs. The SpedPAC is open to parents of children with disabilities, or anyone that's particularly interested. Their meetings are held on the third Thursday of every month. They have a website, which is southbridgespedpac.com, and they also have an email at southbridge.spedpac@gmail. They also have a Facebook page, Southbridge SpedPAC. So I attended a meeting on September nineteenth. Elizabeth Scanlon, who is now the Special Ed Supervisor, was introduced to the group. All other things that happened, the DDS, which is the Department of Developmental Services, is opening up the Autism Waiver Program, and that program is open to, um, children under the age of eight that have Mass Health standard and what, it's a random lottery, um, so if you apply, you could potentially get a twenty-five thousand dollar budget for, um, services that could be, funding that could be used for ABA services at home, for ADLs, for equipment. And there's a very small window. The applications must be postmarked October seventh through October eighteenth. And those applications are available at the DDS office in Southbridge. They're on the DDS website, on the Facebook page for the SpedPAC, the Commission for Disabilities Facebook page, and also the Southbridge Public Schools website on the Pupil and Personnel Services page. If your child meets that criteria, you are strongly encouraged to, um, apply for that. Upcoming events, the SpedPAC is sponsoring a presentation and Q and A with Anita Poolen on Sensory Processing Disorder on October seventeenth in Room M one hundred at twenty-five Col Ave from six to eight PM. It is open to the public, so if you are interested in finding out anything about sensory processing, what SI dysfunction is, if you've heard it, you don't understand what that is, or if you have a child who you think might have that, or you're looking for strategies and ways to help, um, a child that has sensory issues, that would be a great thing to attend. And I think that is all that happened at the very busy SpedPAC meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, report of the Finance Director, Ms. Karen Sheridan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I've given out, um, the FY thirteen budget, the final budget for your review. Uh, there's a summary budget and expanded version. The FY thirteen budget, uh, was twenty-three million, seven hundred and eighty-six, four hundred and ninety-three. Uh, we ended the year with a balanced budget and were able to, um, salvage one hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and two of the Circuit Breaker funds to carry over into the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. Uh, the anticipated Circuit Breaker reimbursement that we expect to receive in FY fourteen was just announced. That is five hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine, which is down from last year, which was six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-one. Uh, that was only due to the fact that we have less students qualifying for this re- reimbursement. The, um, percentage is still seventy-five percent that the state is reimbursing. Uh, last year's reimbursement was based on thirty-four students, and this year's is based on thirty students. The Department of Education, uh, in- uh, indicated that they're very optimistic that we'll be able to keep these funds, um, because, as you know, um, they're subject to appropriation. Uh, the reasons that we have less students in this claim were decreased services for some students, um, an increase in the foundation budget, and some of the students moved from district, from the district. The, um, for fiscal year fourteen, um, I'm going to have, um, the budget, um, analysis for that in the upcoming October Budget Committee meeting. For the fiscal year thirteen, I just wanted to say a few things. Um, for me, that it was more, um, an exercise in what I needed to do to improve this year. Um, I feel like, um, it needs to be monthly analysis of the account to make sure that everything's in the proper accounts. Um, checks and balances, internal controls, very important, need to be put into place. Um, we're trying to do that right now. Budget updates to the administration, which the first one will be coming out in October. July and August is kinda, um, you kinda wait a little bit because those first two summer months are, you know, everything's so busy, and the expenses aren't as high as they start to when the school starts. So I like to start it off more in October. Um, I want to make sure there's a better paper trail, um, there's more organization in how they keep track of expenses with the grants, um, the procedures. Um, and also look into trends. Um, with the high school expenses, um, when I look at the budget, um, some of them were way off, but that was kind of because they didn't have the trends to look at where you had a new school. So that would be something that I'd be looking to. Um, as we get better at, um, doing this monthly analysis, it will be kind of twofold for me. One is, um, I would be better able to, um, help the administration to keep on budget, but also for when we go to do the next year's budget, um, it will help me to get better figures. Because, um, from looking at the fiscal year thirteen, um, there was a lot of areas that were either underbudgeted, overbudgeted, um, and some things that were not put into the budget that maybe they were new things, I'm not sure because I'm new here. But that's why I want to set into place that monthly analysis where I really kind of thoroughly go through the general ledger, make sure everything's in place. So, um, I will have opportunity when we have that budget meeting in October for any other questions that you have with regard to fiscal year thirteen, or the, um, the budget projections that I'll have for fiscal year fourteen.
Is there any questions? Mrs. Congdon?
Actually, I just have more of a comment. I just wanted to, um, commend Karen and her team for the, um, job that they're doing in organizing everything and making the checks and balances, um, and taking on this task. So I just wanted to thank you and your team for working so hard.
Anyone else? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you explain, Karen, just to people viewing, what Circuit Breaker is? I think we take for granted what that is, and I don't think anybody in the public really understands what that is. Very briefly.
Okay, uh, the Special Education Reimbursement Program, otherwise known as Circuit Breaker. Uh, school districts are eligible for reimbursement of expenditures for students whose special education program costs more than four times the state foundation budget. By law, the districts are reimbursed for seventy-five percent of the cost above the threshold, subject to appropriation. Um, before Circuit Breaker, um, these extra nor- extraordinary costs for Sped students had to be absorbed by the district. As you know, the Sped population is an ever-changing population and often very hard to predict with certainty. For example, a student moves into a town who requires special education. As a residential program, those costs could be upwards of a hundred thousand dollars. So the Circuit Breaker is very important for us in the special education. Does that answer your question?
I think that is.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I also wanted to, um, build on what Ms. Congdon said. I know that, having been into signed warrants, I know how hard your team is working. And I just had a question. I know that there was some, for two weeks, we're not going to be able to do things. Can you explain? Like, I don't understand what happened.
Uh, the, the girl that does the payables in the town is on vacation, so, um, we've been told to, we submitted as much as we can, um, today, and then there's going to be about a week that, um, it's going to be hard to get anything unless it's something that's real- really imperative. And then we'll, um, I've spoken to Karen Harnoyz, and she said if there's something that we really need that we can go over there, but they're not going to be doing large warrants for about a week.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, I'd like to say one other thing because I would like to say that, um, my team is really working very hard, so I thank you very much for those words.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to report of the Superintendent.
Yes, the Superintendent's report. It is, I passed out a sheet to all of you with, uh, the John and Abigail Adams Scholars Information, the class of twenty-fourteen. And there were a total of, uh, twenty-two seniors who, uh, scored at advanced or proficient level and are now eligible for full tuition at any state college or university, which is a tremendous benefit and an honor to them. I'd like to read their names off. I think they deserve to be recognized publicly for, um, their perseverance and their work over the years. David Andino, Tatiana Arroyo, Rosa Britto, Stephen Celestino, Jennifer Frichette, Catherine Frichette, Megan Garley, Erin Jovan, Alex Manzo, Casey Mitchell, Elijah O'Leary, Tiffany Ortega, Jason Peck, Joseph Pontbriand, Orlando Cuesada, Akela Serrano, Lucas St. Germain, Adriana Stratton, Emilio Torres, Karina Torres, Javier Torres Junior, and Miranda Watkins. I think it's a tremendous honor to the, to them, their families, and the school system. And I'd like to also make particular mention for four seniors who received the highest scores in all three subjects tested, English Language Arts, Math, and Science. They were advanced in all three areas. There were Stephen Celestino, Catherine Frichette, Casey Mitchell, and Joseph Pontbriand. And there were, uh, of the twenty-two, there were fifteen other students who achieved two advanced and one proficient. So there are some great success stories in the town rather than just beating up what we do all of the time. So I think these students, um, deserve the recognition, and then we will make sure that, uh, at the school assembly that they will be recognized and honored again for their, uh, great academic achievements. So that concludes my.
Thank you. And congratulations to all those students. Uh, moving on, we have unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business this evening from anyone? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, at the last meeting under policy, we had, um, adopted, um, policy DL on an emergency basis, and I failed to tell you why that happened. So I would like to do that today. We adopted the policy because, on an emergency basis, because school had started and student activities in, also, had wanted to start. And in order to allow that to happen and in order for student activities and clubs to be able to take place and carry on their business that they needed to conduct, we needed to change that policy and do that on an emergency basis. In my report, I also said that I would post, um, policy DL and JJF, the one that we had removed. And those are posted, uh, at twenty-five Col Ave across from the main office. So if anybody is interested in looking at that, there's a lovely bulletin board and policies. Those policies are on there, and as we continue to work on policies throughout the year, they'll also be posted there. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Mrs. Congdon?
I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to be at all the open houses, and I just wanted to say that a lot of the parents' comments were very positive, that the open houses were well-run, um, that the district was moving in the right direction. And it was nice to see all those positive comments. Um, I also had the opportunity last week with my children to attend Epic, the movie, at the Middle School, High School that the soccer and field hockey teams put on. And, um, I just thought it was a great idea. There wasn't as large of a turnout as they think that they might have liked, but, um, the people that did go, it, it was just a really nice family night. They offered the movies at four-thirty and six o'clock, and the sound was great. The movie was great, and it was really a nice time. So it's a nice utilization of the auditorium there. So I just wanted to thank everybody that had part in the open house and that movie night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. A, the next regular school committee meeting will be held October eighth, two thousand and thirteen, in the council chambers. B, there will be an Education and Human Services Subcommittee meeting on October twenty-ninth, two thousand and thirteen, at six PM in the Rice Conference Room. And C, there will be a school committee budget meeting of the whole on Wednesday, October twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, at six-thirty PM at twenty-five Col Ave, Room M one hundred. Is there any other new business this evening? Dr. O'Leary?
Thank you. More or less, a, a curiosity. I had a, um, a request from a, a parent, uh, at one of the elementary schools to ask about the status of, uh, of, uh, school lunches. She, her, her child was, uh, uh, a little dismayed at, um, French toast for lunch and, uh, things of that nature. I know it's not a big deal, but, um, i- it is important in a, in a small way that kids are happy about, uh, the options they have, uh, for their meals. I, I know that last year at the high school level, uh, initially, there was, there were some changes from the state in reference to, um, proportions of proteins and, uh, versus other constituents of the meals. Um, and I'm happy to say I don't hear a- anything, uh, like that from the high school. Is there a way, uh, potentially for me or the, if any of the other members are, uh, interested to get a, say, a, a sample menu of the, uh, elementary schools for, uh, the lunches? Just to, for me to peruse if, if nothing else?
What we can do is on the next meeting on October eighth, we'll have Ms. Alicia come. She's the Director of Food Service, and I will ask her to bring samples of the lunch menus.
See if any changes have, have come down that have, uh,
Correct.
mandated, uh,
I know they've always had breakfast for lunch, um, at least once a month, maybe twice a month. Um, but yes, she can come at the next meeting, and I'll make sure that she has all that information to us before the meeting, and, um, she can do a presentation on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Mrs. Quinney?
I think just, uh, Madam Chair, um, I know that Ms. Alicia also started, so if a child doesn't want to have breakfast for lunch, they also have a sandwich option at all the, um, schools now. So even in the kindergarten level, if they don't like the option for whatever this hot lunch is, they have an option for a cold lunch, which is a sandwich, which is new.
Maybe that's, uh, an option that the, the particular, um, student was unaware of, and, you know, they're still young kids, and it can be sort of daunting, uh, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other new business? Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, what I would like to bring up is, uh, first of all, an announcement that I had received some information, um, about a wonderful puppet show that's going to be taking place in our community on Saturday, October fifth. It'll be taking place at eleven AM at the Art Center down on one-eleven Main Street. It's five dollars for adults, and then if you bring your children, the children are free as long as they're with an adult. And there, it's just a delightful storytime, um, for, for children. There's going to be a lady there who will tell stories, but she has life-size puppets and kind of brings these puppets to life with humor, and the crowd can participate. And I've attended this before, and it is just a wonderful thing for little kids. So it's, it's ideal for ages three to eight. Anybody can attend. But, um, if you have a child that fits in that, um, that age bracket, Saturday, October fifth, at eleven AM at the Art Center. Um, the other thing, under new business, that I'd like to bring up, not for a full discussion, but just to talk about MCAS results very quickly. Um, I know for a long time, the results were embargoed, which means we did not know what they were. They recently came out, um, and I just wanted to say that I knew that the embargo was going to be lifted, so to speak, but I have not received any information of what our scores were. I've read them in the local paper. Um, I was confronted by somebody yesterday in the local grocery store about them, and I felt kind of stupid because I really didn't know anything about it, only because I did not have any of that information ahead of time. So I guess at this point, if there's anything that we can do to provide us with MCAS information and what we can, where we stand and what our, our goals are towards, towards that, um, getting those results better, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
My plan was to make a presentation at the next meeting. Today, at, uh, District Leadership Team, we went over a preliminary review of all of the tests and, um, results. Uh, the principals, uh, have analyzed it. We'll be meeting with their faculties. We're very concerned about our low scores in the test. This is something that's been continuing for a number of years. It seems that we plateaued at the low end. And, uh, one of the questions that was asked of me was, um, what are some of the reasons? And then for my quick review was that, uh, we have an adequate budget, we're well-staffed, we have, uh, resources, so now we have to look at what's happening in the classroom and accountability pieces that, from my perspective, haven't been as effective as they can be. And so we'll be working on a presentation for you publicly on television. The principals will all be here. We will have analyzed the scores. We will have looked at what our strengths and what our weaknesses are. I think it's more important for the public to hear, eh, an honest review of the last few years, and then say, here is our strengths, and then here are our weaknesses, and then, and then present plans. And here's how we're going to address these deficiencies, and here's what, uh, how we've organized ourselves to do that. Uh, we're not going to get out of Level Four if we keep ignoring those scores. And I think that's some, one of the things that, so I've asked for all kinds of analysis. I spent, somebody came in my office today, sitting there, looking at all of the comparisons. Uh, I want to look at like districts. I want to look at communities that spend less than we do and perform higher. That's what I want to look at. I want to do a careful analysis of all of this rather than the first blush. They are very low. I think we're all, uh, and, and it's been that way for the last few years. It has to turn around. And from my perspective, it's what happens in the classroom and accountability piece that is not occurring as effectively and as efficiently as it should. I was very upset when I started looking at those scores. My hope is that, um, everyone else has a sense of urgency that I have and, uh, some of our administrators have, that, uh, things need to be done. We can't blame the students or their home life or so on. There are plenty of other school districts in this state that have a demographic that is, uh, as challenging and as challenged as ours, and more so at performing higher. Was, and spending less per pupil. I think that's something that has to be looked at and, and, and discussed regularly. I think some people just say, "Good enough." That's not acceptable. And, uh, so we did a quick analysis. We did a quick review, compared ourselves to certain communities, uh, that are similarly situated, Webster being one of those that are near us, and so on. We looked at some other areas, and to say that we're doing better than the next lowest-performing district is not good enough. And accepted that as, as the rationale. We looked at, um, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. I spent a lot of time with it when it first came out in the mid-nineties. And I remember, uh, all of the comments and so on that, uh, we're teaching to the test, we're not giving the kids creative materials, et cetera. The Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment is considered to be the best test in the country. The Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System tests what should be taught in the classroom. And there is nothing wrong with teaching to the test. Good teachers have always taught to the test. I used to get a spelling test every Friday, a unit test on a regular basis. So somehow or other, the idea came out that teaching to the test was a bad thing. It's not a bad thing if it's teaching, uh, testing what should be taught. And, uh, Massachusetts has the frameworks that's aligned to the test. The questions are released every year, unlike many other states where it's a secret. And, um, and so I think that's part of our administrative responsibility and the school committee to hold our feet to, to the fire to ensure that we are working toward improving that. Our ELL scores are the worst I've ever seen, and, uh, Special Ed is right behind it. It's been ignored for way too long. Uh, I looked at one of the schools, and they had zero kids performing. ELL students, and yet I look at Holyoke, I look at Springfield, I look at Worcester, and their ELL kids perform. And then when we tried to restructure the department, uh, this past spring, all I got was complaint that we weren't, we weren't doing this and so on. We can demonstrate, and we will demonstrate over the years, what hasn't worked. And we're not going to keep putting more money into programs that give us no results. If you're running a business, you'd be broke. It's called return on educational investment. And so I'm glad you asked that question. I wasn't going to get hot. I've been hot for a few days now. I've been hot for a few days now and so on, because it's just unacceptable to me to sit back and say it's okay for kids to do this badly and to say we're doing okay. So next meeting, all the administrators will be here. There will be a presentation for the public PowerPoint. It will be put on the web. And then we will see exactly where we stand. And then it'll be also over time. Over time. It didn't happen overnight. It's not going to get fixed overnight. But we're certainly going to make sure that we can improve enough that the herd is moving, as they say, roughly northeast on that panel. So, I mean, it was actually Karen that asked that question today's meeting, not being the educator. She says, do we not spend enough? And I said, we spend enough. We have adequate resources. We have our teaching staff, our class size ratios, are fine. So we're not understaffed. We have lots of paras and tutors, and in fact, more so than many other districts. It's just how we use them, how we created an accountability program, and so on. During the retreat, and at the same time, I want to thank Sarah Jordan for putting out the monthly newsletter. It's out on the web today. And it's going to be a regular newsletter that comes out every month. And then it will be information about the educational progress. So I think when I was in Brockton, the first thing I looked at was data. And this is what we're trying to get here, have more data. You can't differentiate instruction if you don't know where the kids are. And how do you know where the kids are if you don't have data? And so we haven't had a data program here, so my outpost we're putting in and hope to have it up and running a little bit. And then the teachers will have something that's fairly user-friendly and easy to use. Where we can now look at student data, principals can look at student data, school committee members and administrators, parents will be able to look at it. That's one of the goals, where they can look at where their kids are, how they're performing on a regular basis. We've kept people in the dark for too long, and we've accepted mediocre performance. And then we argued about personalities and people rather than talking about what kids need. And I'm frankly frustrated by that aspect of... It's the way we always do it here. You're spending $24 million a year and getting these kinds of results. Completely unacceptable. And I know that I've created some tension in this community, and I'm glad. Without tension, nothing else happens. If everybody's just sliding along, humming Kumbaya, for lack of a better song, I couldn't think of something better, as if everything's fine. It's not. And I think the community members are starting to realize that. And we can't keep picking up the rug and shoveling it underneath there. There are going to be some unhappy people here. They should have been unhappy a long time ago. So thank you for opening up that, my little soapbox.
Anything else, Mrs. Donovan? You're good? Anyone else for new business? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, thank you to the superintendent for those words. We've needed to hear them for a long time, and I appreciate all the work that you are doing. I just wanted to say, and I don't know whether I should have brought this up under unfinished business or new business, but I did have the opportunity to attend the Southbridge Middle High School Open House last Thursday. It was the best open house I have been to as a parent in this district, bar none. I say that for a bunch of reasons. First of all, what they did was they had the parents go into the auditorium and showed a video. This video was hilarious. And if anybody gets an opportunity to see it, I'm not sure if it's on our website. Is it posted on the website? Do we know? No. I guess it's on Facebook. Two gentlemen kind of emceed it, and I don't know if these gentlemen, two of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients were there. It was, I believe their names were Orlando and Javier. I don't know if they're the same ones that are on our list here of recipients. But they did a fantastic job. Rather than having all the administrators come up and introduce themselves, personally, they did it in a funny, captivating video. So I would encourage people, if they have access to Facebook... Is it on the Southbridge High School Facebook? Do we know? Southbridge Middle High School Facebook page, if you get an opportunity to see it. But beyond that, then we went and met with the teachers. And what I found this year, literally for the first time since I've been in this district, I felt like my children's teachers were part of a team. They had a consistent message. They had a consistent sense of urgency. They had a consistent enthusiasm. And really, it made me feel very good and very confident about this school year. So I thank everybody who was involved in making that happen. I do not have children in the elementary schools, so I'm sure their nights went equally as well. But I would like to commend the administration staff and everybody at Southbridge Middle High School for making that one of the best nights that I've had as a parent in the school district.
Can I add to that? Someone asked me, how do you turn a district around? And that's a good question. And I said, before you can focus on the classroom, you have to make sure the infrastructure is set. And many of you know you sat through some of those finance Subcommittee meetings, and which were less than a pleasant experience. So the first thing we had to do was get our finances in order. And Karen's done a great job doing that. Now we have regular statements. Things add up at the bottom and so on. So we had to get the finances. I was embarrassed if someone ever asked me, Superintendent Nembiko, how many people work in the Southbridge Publix? I couldn't answer that for the first couple of months I was here, because we didn't have accurate records. So now we do. So we had to get the financial house in order. The second thing we had to do was get the organization fixed. So buses run, schools are clean, materials are ordered, rather than one school ordering twenty... Nathan... Yeah, toners, because they... And we asked her why. She says, well, if I don't do it now, probably won't get it later on. So we're going to hoard stuff. And so that took an awful long time. So we have that. We have an organization now that can support teaching and learning. And now we can get out. I haven't been able to get out to the schools as much as I would like because I was busy dealing with organizational matters. I'm still going to continue dealing, because it's never going to be fixed. It's a people thing. But I think that we have our finances, our structures in place. We have, we can purchase things, we can pay for things, and we know how much money we have every month. I'm not going to freeze the budget in October like there's been done consistently and schools couldn't get supplies. First thing I did when I came here in February was unfreeze the budget for essential material supply. That's where morale comes, when teachers can't get and schools can't get essential materials. There was never an account for textbooks. So those are the kinds of things that were broken. The special ed transportation was beyond... I'm looking at Kaline over here. She's also done a great job taking one area that has been consistently ranked by parents as being non-responsive to the needs of the kids, not responsive to the needs of the parents on a regular basis. It's still a work in progress, because as we know, special needs parents have special needs kids and are very concerned to it and can be, so on. That's normal. I have trouble, you know, dealing with some of the staff members that have trouble dealing with a parent who's there to advocate for their child. I always tell a parent, if you don't advocate for your child, who will? So we expect them to be a little difficult periodically. And we have to learn how to work with all of that. So this is a habits... We had one parent say, this is the first time you've apologized to me for doing something wrong, rather than blaming the parent. This is going to be a tough haul. We have some difficult parents here. There's no question. But you have them everywhere. We just have to make sure that we can deal with that, that we can deal with the adults as well as we can deal with the children in a respectful manner. It didn't happen on a regular basis. I hear comments and some things being made and so on, which greatly offend me. And it's class issues and things of that particular nature. And I'm not going to talk about my own background, but I remember very well what it felt like to be talked down to. So we're working on that, and now we're going to look at very carefully what happens in the classroom and performance, because we got much of the other stuff in line to be effective. Now we're going to look at what happens in the classroom on a regular basis. One of our biggest problems is attendance. Students and faculty. And it's very upsetting. So, and those are really hard things to do, change old habits, because you have to change them and then instill new ones. And that takes, and there's a lot of pushback, because many of those people who've had a good run for a long time, instead of saying they had a good run, it's over, let me do my stuff, they're still fighting us, challenging us on every turn. And I read some of the stuff that's printed over here, and the haters are going to be the haters no matter what happens. And so on. So I think that what Lawrence said a long time ago, I wish the parents would sometimes give us the benefit of the doubt before they start focusing on the negative. And there will always be problems, folks. And I think that if we pull together now and stop attacking each other, that we can move forward, and hopefully by the time I retire again, that we can be on our way out of Level Four status. And the only way it's going to happen is if we focus on what the needs are, which is the classroom and the kids. First few months I was here, didn't hear any talk about kids. It was all about adults. And still too much talk about adults. It has to be, you know, what happens on a daily basis. The interaction between the teacher and the child is the most critical element of success. And that every study has finally proven that. What some of us always knew. And we got to ensure that that happens in every classroom, not just the dedicated, the ones that really care, and so on. I think that the statement that Focus on Results brought to us was one that's the most powerful, that resonates with me on a regular basis, when he asked the principals, what's your West Street standard? And Mr. Labbe, being quite eloquent, went on. He says, no. Your standard is your lowest-performing teacher. I'll repeat that again. Your standard, that school is your lowest-performing teacher. You've got to elevate that. Your standard for students is your lowest-performing kid. Got to move that forward. So if you look at it from that perspective, you know, I saw those glitzy things that were published all over town, the Southbridge Standard. Didn't have anything about the lowest performance, okay? We're not going to get anywhere unless we deal with the lowest performer and move that up, and if not, out. So I'll get off my soapbox. But this has been a very challenging two weeks now, trying to get everything focused on what we should be doing rather than all the adult stuff that I've been dealing with. Drama. Thank you.
Any other new business? Seeing none. Agenda item number 15 is executive session. Vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part III. It'll have a motion. Motion by Dr. O'Leary, second in.
Second.
By Mrs. Congdon, and roll call, please.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domenico excused. Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Thank you, and we'll come back to open session for German-only.